I'd like to call this special meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, yes?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protim Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster. Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here.
Y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seems like it's in a different place. All right. Want to thank everyone for being here this evening. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. And we have introduction of new employees. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, it appears that our new employee is out on a call right now. We have a new fire employee at the fire department, and I just heard that they got called out.
Okay. Safety to them. All right, let's move on to item five, committee reports from commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacamo.
Yes. Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors met on July 26th, 2014, at 5:00, 6:00 p.m. Government has been asked to manage a bookkeeper presented to and approved by the board of financial and statistical information. We reviewed an appeal for a poll attachment license agreement. Held discussion of poll attachment agreement and your cost to rebound to rebound internet service provider in regards to the grant with the city of Raton requesting a tier increase in two years increments from Raton Public Service. Also approval and transfer of City of Raton Orders 942, Section 19. Discuss and approve the Raton Public Service Company Resolution 2024-4 FY 23-24 and budget adjustment request. Discussion and approval of Raton Public Service Company Resolution 24.5. Approval on the June 30th, 24, 24. Financial report. Discuss and approve of the Raton Public Service Company Resolution 2024-6. Also FY 20-4 to 20-5. Final municipal budget application adoption. Discuss and approval of Raton Public Service Company Resolution 24-7. Disposal of surface property owned by the Raton Public Service Company. That was the discussion and approval of the additional addition to the Western Area Power Administration contract, Raton Public Service Contract Number 17-SLC-0903 pertaining to scheduling, accounting, and procedures. RPS General Manager Dave Pencino gave a report on Unit 4 generation and also the solar re project, solar re. Raton, the other archipelagos, Memorial Library, Advisory Board, we know it's held Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, 5:30 p.m. Library Director Danny Marcus reported to the board that we were visited by three state personnel, and all three of them were very impressed with what they seen in the library. Jenny and Melinda covered the work activities performed and to include all the scheduled programs. Statistical report for month of May 2024. Donations collected was zero, fines collected was $123.00. Copies made, $599.88. Memorials received was zero. Stories held were three, attended by 121 persons. Programs held at the library was ten, attended by 227 persons. Statistical report for the month of June 2024. The donations collected was zero, fines collected was $313.74. Copies made were $708.17. Memorials received was $17.95. Stories held at the library was three, attended by 109 persons. Programs held at the library was 49, attended by 147 persons. That's how I got that way.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Protim.
All right. It's been a busy month. June 27th, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Resolutions and Policy Committee meetings in Albuquerque along with Commissioner Schuster. All the committees met together since there was a small attendance, which is a big change from prior years. We first discussed the fiscal impact of past legislation that the league has worked on that affects all municipalities, which has been incredibly significant. We reconsidered all the resolutions from last year and a few new ones with some amendments and deletions, et cetera. They will be ranked high priority if they are germane in this upcoming session in 2025. Priority topics must have commonality among members and do not include special interests based on solid research and data. This year, we expect priorities related to behavioral health, public safety. Sorry, my phone just. Taxes and IPR reform. The final resolutions and policy will be adopted at the annual meeting in Clovis next month. That afternoon, I went up to Santa Fe for the New Mexico, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board meeting along with Mayor Sagata. Contracts and budget adjustments were approved, including a contract for Scott Berry as the Restoring Our Communities Program Coordinator for our area. This program is through Colfax County, and it acquires, rehabs, and resells vacant homes with workforce in mind. I know he's trying to find some good projects for that. We approved the ICIP and the FY 25 budget, which includes several new positions. Of note, North Central is a resource for help with GIS data as part of their services. For the non-metro AAA, State Aging and Long Term is starting a new quarterly magazine for seniors, as well as outfitting all senior sitters with smart TVs to broadcast events, news, and activities. So some new things there. Under their special projects, they're seeing success with senior home repair and modification programs, as well as transitional workforce housing programs. And they still offer that free grant writing service for their members, which has been quite successful. On July 3rd, I attended the National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Meeting on Zoom. We narrowed the scope to city parks with a secondary emphasis on trails and active transportation. Roles and responsibilities were defined, and we'll be meeting in August or September to use, and now it is August, I guess, finalize that, to use GIS data to do field inventory and mapping of our city parks, along with visioning and goals. There will be a chance for public input before we do any type of park planning. It's very preliminary work. And our next meeting, I believe, is Wednesday morning on Zoom. July 7th, I attended a meeting with field representatives from Senator Martin Heinrich's office. I believe Mr. Mestes reported on that previously. We discussed education, transportation, housing, film, emergency operations, airport improvement, economic development, and outdoor rec. Mr. Mestes took them on a tour, including Sugar Creek Canyon State Park. And they are very interested in being part of the economic development segment in October, and they really would like to get Senator Heinrich here for a visit. On July 15th, I attended the waterborne meeting along with Commissioner Schuster. Lake Maloya is a half a foot below Spillway. Filter plant production for June was 40.3 million gallons with a peak flow of 1.86 million gallons per day. Willistic completed the survey at Lake Maloya regarding seepage, and actually, the draft came in the mail today. It's very, or not in the email today. It's very in-depth. It's a big report with lots of different data to make sure that that dam is solid and see what future projects we might need to work on seepage. The Simmons was still being worked on at our meeting, communication issues that had to do with technology needed to work out, but it's mechanically functioning well. But they are trying to get that technology going, and because of that, it's several months behind schedule. The wastewater sledge field plans were approved and went out for bid. We approved quarter financial reports and the final budget for FY 25, which comes to the commission tonight. Residual amount of $21,767 will be transferred to the city. We approved meter replacement and parts under our state price agreement, and our next meeting will be August 20th at 5:00 p.m. here in the commission chambers. July 18th through 19th, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Municipal Officials' Leadership Institute Level 2, which for me was a refresher course in Albuquerque. It was well worth the time. We had several sessions on responsibilities of governing bodies and chain of command, public procurement, zoning, crisis management, better preparation for grants, public safety, leadership, occupational safety, and lobbying. There was far too much to report, but I have a few highlights. One was for governing bodies, just a refresher that it's important that we remember our communication in a meeting is through the mayor and not directly with each other. And then we would gain the floor through the mayor. It's also clarified that holding a special meeting outside an open meeting doesn't violate quorum and allows you to establish an agenda if you need to discuss with another commissioner to have a special meeting. For zoning, one important takeaway was that zoning hearings are in our judicial capacity as commissioners. So a reminder that staff and residents giving testimony should be sworn in at any zoning hearings that we have in the commission chambers. Elected officials act in a judicial capacity and should avoid ex parte communication, which means we shouldn't have any contact with residents or the properties themselves except as part of the hearing, and we should provide cross-examination, and the applicant bears the burden of proof. For public safety, New Mexico Self Insurers Fund. Talked a little bit about their services. They do provide free police department policy reviews along with free classes and 24/7 expertise. We are encouraged to call when needed. Occupational safety, they do have, and I don't know if we've taken advantage of this yet, but they are willing to help with free safety data sheet work, help with our annual safety plan. They're willing to do site inspections regarding occupational safety hazards, and they're releasing a digital resource called ZiWAVE regarding a number of topics very soon that will be online and we'll be able to let everybody have access to that. Crisis management, they encouraged us to be, as the commission, to be a part of the city's incident action plan and participate in annual tabletop exercise, as well as, one idea that I thought was really good was if we have a public event going on, that we should go to our emergency operations center in real time and practice as if something happened during that event and kind of see how we do with managing something during maybe a festival or something when there's no emergency, but just as a point of practice. They did talk a little bit about approving messaging and having one media contact in the city. And then the Rio Rancho Fire Department had a presentation, and they do offer training with their Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, as they call it, for other communities. For grants, ton of information. We were encouraged to develop a project portfolio ahead of each project as we're designing it, so that when grants come up, that we just have that available, ready to go. And I'm following through on a contact from Edgewood regarding an abatement program that they said was working really well there. The Port of the Plains Board did not meet, and our next meeting will be in September at the annual conference. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schuster, you got a report for us?
I do. First off, is the pass is back open, and thank you for stuck up there for a good half hour. So, yes, June 21st, I did attend a licensure and regulation and licensure board meeting. And they are trying to, they're better staffed again, so they're trying to reach out to all professional license holders and try to be a little more friendly and open to public comments. So if you have a question, I can get you the phone numbers to call. June 27th, I attended the policy process outline with New Mexico Municipal League, and I'm sure that Mayor Protim reviewed most of what we went over. So I'll just leave it at that. And I also heard you giving the waterborne, so I'll leave your comments there. I was specifically on the Environment, Energy, and Natural Resources Policy Committee, but there were only two of us, so they did lump us all together, and I was able to stay through the entire thing while Mayor Protim had to go off to a different meeting. Then on, seems like I have something else, too, that I'm missing, but July 17th. I was down at UNM, or NMSU, I'm sorry, with our city manager and Dr. Eric, no.
Ken Erickson.
Ken Erickson, sorry, sorry, Ken. We spoke with the president and staff of officials regarding trying to get some additional higher education here into this region. And I think where they're at right now, they're, they've just started a global campus meeting. They're opening up their online classwork. And so I think what we came up with is the best place to start is we'll partner with them on their global campus and possibly get some better, get some assistance with not only the New Mexico Educational, Northeast New Mexico Educational Foundation, which is not quite debunked, it's actually turned into the CCI. I'm blanking on that. Anyway, and so we can get additional classes in there as well as some work with them on our our film school project. I think we can get some assistance and some better training through, for people like electricians and whatever else we need. We have a lot more work to do on that, but it wasn't exactly what we hoped for, but I think, I think what we can get done sounds promising, and I think we can get some good higher education up here in this area. I've also worked with Growing Great Kids, and thanks to Eleanor Barfield. She's working hard at helping get some of the free little libraries scattered around town. And even she was talking to anybody who getting one down in Maxwell. She was able to acquire some newspaper stands, and they make good free little library stands. So I think that project will be expanding and thanks to Kevin Nolan, he's helped work on that project too as well, ZIA Youth. So getting more books out to kids is the idea, as well as adults. So I'm probably forgetting something, but, you know, I left my brain up there on the pass. It was hot. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. As for myself, I'm not going to rehash everything that I've attended that same people have attended. I did attend the North Central meeting, the RPS meeting. Did have a meeting with New Mexico Self Insurers Fund with A.J. Forday, Clinton Isley, and Alan Fugler regarding asset liability insurance and that on some of our assets to see where we stand. In particular, the Borough Canyon Transmission Line, if it was the high winds was the cause of fire, who's responsible? We own the line, so I imagine we are to a degree, but just to see what could happen. And Dave has been instrumental in that and getting me the information we need for that. Also, this past week, we, New Mexico Area Agency on Aging, held their quarterly advisory council meeting here in Raton. I want to thank the city and the staff for getting the convention center up and ready to go. We had about 80 participants on both days for each day, and it was a huge success. So I appreciate all the work that the city and staff did for that. Other than that, that's about it. All righty. Item six, items from citizens present. At this time, we will take comments from the audience on anything other than what's on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up, and we do not discuss personnel at this time. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move into the business section. Item seven, A, deliberate an act on approval of July 9th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Have a chance to go through them. If there are no additions or corrections, I would submit that the meetings be approved as submitted. Any changes? Meetings, minutes stand approved. Item B, discussion, commission meeting on August 13th, 2024, and the New Mexico Municipal League 67th Annual Conference. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference will be held August 14th through 16th in Clovis. Since the majority will be attending, we may want to move the city commission meeting to August 12th to accommodate travel for city leadership.
Okay, that would be on the Monday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any conflicts? Is that all right with everybody? Sounds good to me.
It's me in the same position as tonight, but
maybe the pass will be
Maybe the pass will be clear.
But entertain a motion.
I will make that motion to move the August commission meeting that would normally be on the
13th?
13th to the 12th.
Second.
Motion second to move the meeting from the 13th until August 12th. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote both sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discussion, potential changes to animal ordinance and the vacant building ordinance. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this discussion involves Section 90.090, the city ordinance that states the keeping of large livestock animals, but not limited to llamas, horses, mules, miniature horses, donkeys, swine, bovines, goat, sheep, buffalo, and buffalo is not permitted in the city limits, except as allowed in an R1-zoned area or as allowed by future zoning imposed by the city. This comes up as there are a number of properties within the city that are several acres and where grazing may be beneficial to suppress weeds and invasive species. It was requested that the city commission review this ordinance, excuse me, to determine if it can be amended to allow grazing in areas such as over 5, 10, or possibly 20 acres. The second item of discussion is a request to clarify the vacant building definition as it relates to summer homes of part-time residents.
All right, so let's go with the livestock issue first. Any questions, comments? First, in reading R1, you know, it does say there is agriculture activities not in conflict with the rural residential character determined by time. It doesn't give you a number of head of cattle you can keep or horses that I could find. I looked, looked, and looked. I did not see that. I know there was reference to small animals. I still remember, but I could not find anything on that, so.
Now, Mayor, are we talking about keeping animals there? Or are we talking about allowing them to graze for certain periods?
I think both is what we're considering here, so.
And, excuse me, Mayor, the Extension Office of New Mexico State University does have recommendation on the number of animals per acre for our, I guess what I would call a temperate step here.
And the minimum lot size is one acre for, it looks like, for R1 areas, so it would have to be over an acre of land.
Right.
Right, currently, if that's how it's zoned. But we don't have any particular animal.
I think what we're looking at are larger sections, 5, 10, 15, 20 acres and above.
Ms., do you have those numbers, by chance?
I do not, sorry.
I know when it comes to cattle, it tends to be acres per animal as opposed to animals per acre.
Well, depends on if you're there like a week or
Exactly, that's what I meant, if you're grazing for a certain amount of time, that's different than keeping him there all the time.
I think it'd be important, I'm sorry, to have an idea of what properties would be affected around town and things like that. My biggest concern, my delineating it and putting a certain acreage with animals is just making sure that we don't then make a neighbor angry who, somebody has, you know, cattle or pigs or some other agricultural animal that might create an aroma that might not be pleasant to the neighbors. So that would be my biggest concern, I think.
A lot of communities are using goats to control weeds, goats and even other small sheep, I suppose.
Well, I think this is just a discussion and that, so I think we need to come up with some parameters as to size of the lots that we want to, this to go into effect with and to what degree. I know a few years ago, we did have an issue with the horse rescue property over there off of, I can't even think of the street now.
Right.
Fairview, yep, off of Fairview. So there's some things that we need to probably try to give a list to Mr. Mestes of our concerns, and then he could forward that on to the zoning commission and such. Run their process. I'm sure there's going to be a number of public hearings involved, so.
Yeah, I would like to hear some info.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because I can just share like what my operation is, because I'm one of these parties that's involved in this. So over the years, we've raised meat animals for sale to individuals, and we try to do it such that there's a resting period for the property so it revegetates and that kind of thing. But one of the nice things with cattle versus like goats or horses is they can't overgraze to make it devoid totally of vegetation. So, I mean, it's going to be one of those things where it's just going to depend on the particular operation as to how it happens or what takes place. There again, cleanliness is an issue that I know for us, we always keep on top of it, but not everybody will.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, like I said, good starting point. Let's put something together and present it to Mr. Mestes that he can forward to the zoning commission.
Did this actually come from the zoning commission?
This came from the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, may I ask a question? Did it occur because of the cattle grazing at La Mesa Park? Because that was all a surprise to all of us when we go by and there are cattle grazing in it.
Believe that might have started.
Get bigger in numbers.
I believe that might have started the conversation.
I do want to just make a comment. Having been raised on a farm, we don't, you don't get a smell unless you have a feedlot or just an enclosed area where then they, you know, don't cap the grass. If you, yeah, and if you do regulate it per acre per number of animals or vice versa, that you wouldn't have that problem. But I think that a lot of it might be dependent on the neighbors, and I know like for chickens, the neighbors do have to kind of ask, is it okay if we have chickens in our backyard? And no roosters are allowed, although every morning I hear a rooster. I have roosters too in the neighborhood. But it's just a matter of courtesy, too, for the neighbors, I guess. So that was an affirmative about the So that was an affirmative about the La Mesa. Is that right?
I would say that probably stirred the conversation, yes, when the size of the herd started to increase.
Because I know that my neighbors across the street have horses sometimes that they board for people or board themselves, but like maybe one or two in quite a bit of acreage there.
Our neighbors had goats. And they walked quite fast. May I make one more comment, Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I think whatever we do decide on, like, I think Commissioner Honeyfield had a good point that if it has to depend on the owner, then it's not good zoning. So whatever we zone has to be good for everybody and non-dependent on whether you have a really responsible owner or not. That is my other comment.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
I think we should have pretty good resources to get good recommendations.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, with Commissioner Honeyfield there, I know former city manager, Mr. Berry, used to put cattle out at La Mesa Park, so... We do have some good resources of that. Between now and the next meeting, if we can come up with some kind of direction for the city manager, that'd be helpful.
May I address the vacant building?
Yes, we can now start on the vacant building ordinance.
My personal feeling is if it's a vacation home and it's cared for and they have someone to basically monitor its safety while they're gone, I think it should be allowed. Does that make sense?
Here's, here's my concern. Is if we do this, I believe we need to set a set time that they must occupy that.
Sure.
Because otherwise, we're going to get everyone coming in and saying, oh, yeah, that's a vacation home, and...
Yeah, however, a lot of those that people might say that to are buildings that are not well cared for.
Well, this is true. This is true. And that's why we've got to be very careful if we're going to change this vacant building ordinance because we don't, we want to make sure it's very, I won't say restrictive, as to what is a vacation home.
Mr. Mayor, I absolutely agree with you. I think, I think it's, we're opening up a can of worms. It's going to be hard to close if we, you know, add a vacation home because everyone's going to say it's a vacation home. And I think it's also, I think you have a great point about the care of the property, but I think as long as, like, it's very hard to also quantify the care of the property. What is up kept to one person may not be up kept to another, so it could be, it could be pretty tricky to change this. We've talked about, you know, hobby buildings. It was another thing that came up, and there's no good way in the law to do that without appeals of the appeal system. So I think it's really tricky personally for us to open this ordinance back up and make any changes.
Like I said, yeah, it's got to be, if we're going to do anything, it's got to be pretty restrictive on what we call a vacation home. Good point on the hobby buildings. You know, we didn't make exceptions for that. If you showed improvements to the building and that, yeah.
What if we look at what, say, Red River does, where their vacation homes and communities were?
That's something we can look at other ordinances for.
Where they have a lot of people who come and go, Eagle Nest, maybe. There's probably others around the state.
I'd be curious myself if we, if there are other vacant building ordinances in these communities, and if there are, do they have that designated separately?
Yeah.
But I think there's a lot of research that would need to be done in order to make that a successful ordinance and to change, or weren't changing ordinance.
I know when we were initially going through with this ordinance and bringing it forth, and after we passed it, I had several communities reach out to me for copies of our ordinance.
Right.
And I believe Los Alamos now has passed an ordinance very similar to the one we passed because they were one of the first communities to reach out to us. Portales reached out. And there was one item, I can't remember now. Off the top of my head, I could go back and look at some stuff.
Yeah, they had to address those things.
Yeah, we can definitely look. Like I said, this is discussion.
I guess two items that I would have concern with. If the city goes through and classifies something as vacant, and I'm relating this back to my interest in the shopping center. I've been told by our insurance carrier that that happens. Our insurance just got canceled. Not a big deal, the property's paid off, but I have a mortgage. That throws my mortgage into default. That's one item. The other thing that I guess I have some concern with is the exemption down here of government entities. And I, and I think it's been an issue in the past where we, the city, are forcing an ordinance on people that we don't comply with ourselves. And I'll, I will state an example. I knocked down a house for the city of Raton on Fifth Street. I cannot tell you how many times the neighbors called and complained to the city years later that the city wouldn't cut the weeds on that property. You know, but yet the ordinance or the code enforcement staff was going around issuing citations to other property owners. We need to lead by example. So that exemption would be deleted, at least in my opinion. That what's good for citizens is good for us. And also, if the city has vacant buildings, we need to address them just as if we would expect private citizens to do the same. Classic examples, that community center down there. If anything looks abandoned, it's that thing. And also, we either need to get rid of it or knock it down, one of the two.
Okay, I think, Mr. Mayor, if I may, in exemption ninety-six, ninety-seven point oh six, I think it's not referring to general city buildings. It's just specifically related to housing projects. And I know that this ordinance also came from another example ordinance, and so it, I don't think it actually covers any city, city building as far as I'm reading it. It's mostly talking about residential and rental units and government housing programs. So it's those specific projects. But I think you have, you know, a good point about city buildings, and I think the city's been trying to move some of those buildings along or do projects with them, and yeah, those properties need to be cleaned up as well.
Yeah, and I agree to the point too that if we've got weeds on property, we need to take care of our weeds as well. Absolutely. Again, I would suggest we come up with our recommendations. Bring them to Mr. Mestes. And see from there. Do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else, any comments? All righty, let's move on.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I had written on this and then I just came across it. So on, let's see, section. Ninety-seven point two one. So this goes back to my background in banking. So on section B, what I've noticed, banks, here at least locally, when they foreclose a property, they are not good stewards of that property typically. And the other issue that we're running into though now, especially for the properties that have been financed through internet banks, these folks don't foreclose those properties. It is left out there as a ghost ownership. So if you looked at the county records, the owner that got foreclosed upon is still listed as the owner, even though they have no interest in it. But the bank or lending institution won't take possession of it either because they don't want to be responsible for the property taxes or the upkeep. I don't have good headcount as to how many properties in town we have that are affected that way.
Yeah, where do you go from there?
Yeah, trying to actually isolate who is the responsible party.
Those are all things that we need to really investigate and see how we can get some. I think if a bank is going to foreclose on somebody and take the property, basically that's what they've done, then they should be responsible for that property.
Yeah.
That's very personal, I understand. It's the same kind of weird, it's a weird thing.
Because I guess it kind of harkens back to the question from a prior meeting. The folks that own the golden rule, did they respond with a certificate of insurance?
Not that I'm aware of.
They have not. So that's, we've given them sixty days to do something.
They did contact us about tearing it down, though.
And why did they wish for us to assume that burden was?
No, they, well, no, they happened to ask us to assume the burden. They were questioning who does that work.
So I know that we had the study done from the Center for Community Progress that came into town and did a study of landbanks and vacant buildings and this exact problem. And a lot of what they found out, all these weird things that happen, a lot of it has to be changed on a state level that we don't have control over, and that was an interesting finding. So I don't know where we are with that process. I encourage them to talk to the league about legislation, but I hadn't heard anything.
We did approach the league about a resolution on a state landbank, and it didn't gather much steam.
Well, I know that Bankers Association of New Mexico has a very strong lobby, so it's, that's good.
Maybe that's tough to push. But that's...
You don't have the votes, it doesn't get...
Well, we've actually heard from Albuquerque, and Albuquerque is now looking at this as well. So Albuquerque's on board, you know, that's where the votes are.
And I do believe Albuquerque and their charter has a landbank, don't they?
I'm not sure about that. But I think, I know that they're talking about going to the legislature and changing some laws.
Yeah. Because we brought this up initially, I want to say, three years ago. And we even took it to what you just attended, Policy Committee, Resolution Committee, and it didn't gather a lot of steam. In fact, I think last year, they finally took it out of the resolutions, proposed resolutions. All right, so a lot of discussion we need to have there. All right, item D, introduction of ordinance, repeal of municipal courts' traffic safety and community corrections fees. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, a few weeks ago, the city commission repealed sections thirty-four point zero seven through thirty-four point zero nine of the Code of the City of Raton under ordinance nine twenty-seven, dated June twenty-four, two thousand and three. As a reminder, in two thousand and twenty-three, the New Mexico Legislature passed House Bill one thirty-nine entitled Eliminating Court Fees, which was signed into law by Governor Lou Angrisham. Under the provisions of the bill, the state has eliminated, under New Mexico statutes, annotated, unent- annotated, excuse me, thirty-five dash fourteen dash eleven, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four. Since then, we have further reviewed with the municipal judge that section nineteen also repeals section seventy point nine nine C of the City of Raton, being ordinance eight thirty-seven, dated September twenty-second, nineteen ninety-two, amending ordinance eight eighty-two, dated June third, nineteen ninety-eight, and amending ordinance nine oh six, dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand and one, regarding penalty assessed fees. We are introducing this ordinance tonight.
All righty, so this is basically something that's been handed down from the state level. This is an introduction. Pencino, you have any comments or anything you'd like to make?
Well, as the municipal judge, Mr. Mayor, it's very important that if I'm asking someone to follow the law, I need to follow it. Regardless of whether it gets passed or not, the state has said I cannot assess any fees. Or as I, when Ms. Antonucci had brought this up the other day, saying the twenty-nine to twenty-nine dollars is the statutory amount. The extra nine dollars that we were charging is just in the ordinances. I started going and looking through every ordinance that found these nine dollars. So as of July first, two thousand and twenty-four, as municipal judge, I have not charged any fees that are in any of the...
Because the way this reads, any fees you collect you have to remit to the...
There was a list of any fee that was assessed prior to, for example, I had just some pieces to pay. The deferral was not meant, part of the deferral was they had to pay for cost by a certain name. They didn't, so as they were assessed prior to, I can collect them once we, if we get paid for them. That money will have to go to the state.
And this is an introduction. We'll have one other meeting with a hearing. Pass or fail?
I'll move to introduce the ordinance repeal of municipal traffic safety and community correction fees. Is there any further discussion?
Des, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Quotum Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, thank you. Item F, deliberate an act on voting delegate and alternate for the New Mexico Municipal League two thousand and twenty-four Annual State Conference. Mr. Mayor? Did I skip one? You skipped E. I'm sorry. Okay, we'll go back to E. Deliberate an act on event form for RAIN, Regional Agency Intervention Network, September twenty-first. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the Regional Agency Intervention Network, RAIN, is sponsoring a recovery and remembrance event to those lost to suicide, violence, and drug overdose. This event will take place on September twenty-first from ten AM to three PM on First Street between Park and Cook.
All righty. Any questions, comments? Looks like the documents are here, and Des, you said they were going to change their insurance.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve the event form for RAIN, September twenty-first, pending the insurance change that's necessary.
Motion second to approve the event for RAIN. Is there any further discussion?
One question. This doesn't block off use at the charging stations, does it?
According to the map, it looks like they still have access. They're just going to use the multimodal area, the grass section, and that's what it looks like.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, vote both sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll try item F. Deliberate an act on voting delegate and alternate for the New Mexico Municipal League two thousand and twenty-four Annual State Conference. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the sixty-seventh annual conference of the New Mexico Municipal League will be held August thirteenth through sixteenth in Clovis. At the annual business meeting on Thursday, August fifth... Mayor Commission, the 67th Annual Conference of the New Mexico Municipal League will pay out August 13 through 16 in Clovis. At the annual business meeting on Thursday, August 5, a president-elect, vice president, treasurer, three directors-at-large for a tier term, and one director-at-large for a one-year term will be elected. Also, the annual statement of municipal policy and annual resolutions will be adopted. Each member municipality in good standing that is registered and attending the annual conference shall be entitled to one delegate vote in electing officers, deciding municipal policy, and voting upon all other questions at the annual business meeting. A municipality in good standing means that at least one half of the municipalities' current league annuals dues must have been paid prior to or at the conference. The vote of the municipality is cast by the voting delegate. In his or her absence, the alternate, who is selected by the governing body of the municipality. The commission is to select a delegate and an alternate.
All righty, I will start the conversation with, I am not eligible, as I will not be attending this year. And I'm not eligible because I'm still on the board anyway, so.
I would like, I'm running for treasurer, so I don't know if that's appropriate.
Are you attending?
Are you attending, Lynn? I guess you're the voting delegate. Mark, are you going? Jac, are you going? Nope. Lindy's our voting delegate.
I nominate Lindy.
By acclamation, I think. She's been our voting delegate in the past.
The delegate and alternate.
You could be the alternate, yeah. And yeah, Mayor Protim is running for the position of treasurer, so. Good luck.
Good luck.
That's a position I never did.
I think since Lindy's gone, we'll just do it by acclamation. I don't believe we need a motion in that. Item G, deliberate an act on lodgers tax advisory board recommendations. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board met on July 17, 2024, and recommended that the city commission award $1,920 to theratonian.com and recommended, and for a 40-week, excuse me, for a 48-week campaign, starting August 1, for sliding banner advertisement plus companion mobile, and four times the Sunday email blast and editorial content.
All righty, I read through this. It looked like everything was in order. We have Ms. Brewer here, if there's any questions for her.
I just want to move to the floor.
All righty.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the request presented by the Lodgers Tax Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board, Corcab. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, this memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the Raton Continuation, Continuum Advisory Board, to the responsibilities of the board, of which the city of Raton is fiscal agent of the grant. This grant is funded through the state of New Mexico Children, Youth, and Family Department, and the goal of this agreement is to improve the juvenile justice system and decrease the incidences of juvenile delinquency in the community, while increasing the emphasis on prevention and early intervention in the juvenile justice system.
Comments, questions? Michael Ann, you have anything to say about this one?
Anything, Mayor Commission? For most of you, with the exception of Mr. Honeyfield, this is an annual MOU that we've done. We've had this grant probably since 2009. So with the current requirements with CYFD, we are required to formalize a memorandum of understanding. So as the city manager stated, we are the fiscal agent for the funding. There is an official, we call it the Corcab Advisory Board in place. And so our coordinator that we employ, Danielle Vanderpool, actually communicates with the board and schedules the meetings. And then we also have to submit copies of agendas, the minutes, everything goes into the CYFD portal. So it is required that we do meet regularly. In addition to these meetings, they also do have a youth committee. So we do have as part of the funding stipends for the youth to participate at the board meetings as well. So throughout the year, they do receive a $25 stipend for attending. Other than that, I know we're always seeking members to be on the board. Sometimes that's quite challenging. But I think that the group they do have in place, Linda Headley is currently the president of that board, and then we have Erica Meadows, who's also an employee of CYFD. And then I also attend the meetings as well. So we typically join the meeting by Zoom.
That was going to be one of my questions. I know at one time, you used to be a city representative on the board. When I first got into this, I.
Like a commissioner?
Yeah, I used to attend. I don't know, it's not a requirement, but I used to attend those meetings.
Yeah, I mean, they have a whole list of positions that they try to fill. Over the years, we've had several judges, law enforcement, Terry Baca from Housing used to sit on this board. We usually have somebody from the church community sit on the board. So we've had a lot of different board members over the years. So I'm sure if a commissioner was interested, we could certainly.
You're doing it. You're doing a fine job.
Yeah, but I do attend the meetings to represent as the fiscal agent. And then I give the financial reports, since we do kind of oversee the financial part of the grant administration.
Any other questions, comments?
To approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the MOU. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on Raton Municipal Cruzfield Airport Taxiway B Reconstruction Project Award. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, this project generally consists of the reconstruction of the taxiway servicing the crosswind runway, and includes the realignment of the taxiway where it crosses the main runway to reduce aircraft velocity at the crossing point. There was only a single bidder for this project, Northern Mountain Constructors Incorporated, but the pricing is considered competitive, as it came in with about 10% of the engineer's probable cost estimate.
All righty, and just to refresh, usually the city's match on this is very minimal, but I believe this is all state and Fed. Michael Ann, is that correct?
Our match is 1%.
1%.
Mr. Mayor, is this contingent, I'm sorry, I was like fading in and out there for a second, upon the FAA funding, I'm assuming?
Yes. Typically how these are presumed to is.
I'll make a motion to approve the Raton Municipal Cruzfield Airport Taxiway B Reconstruction Project Award per the recommendation from Molson Corbin to Northern Mountain Constructors, Inc., contingent upon FAA funding.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call, please, on this one?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo? And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Thank you. Item J, deliberate an act on Taxiway B Reconstruction Bidding and Construction Phase Services Task Order Number 2022-6. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, Molson Corbin is the engineering firm we have under contract to manage all airport projects. All things FAA and airport-related is their specialty. This item is for engineering support managing the construction contract, reviewing submittals, change orders, and responding to requests for information, and managing the FAA and state aviation grants.
Typical of what comes with the airport projects that we have had over the years. Any questions or comments?
I'll move to approve Taxiway B Reconstruction Bidding and Construction Phase Services Task Order Number 22, 2022-6.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve Task Order Number 2022-6. Is there any further discussion?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K, deliberate an act on Taxiway B Reconstruction Bidding and Construction Phase Services Task Order Number 2022-7. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, as stated earlier, Molson Corbin is the engineering firm we have under contract. This item is for 24/7 construction observation and quality control for the duration of this project, as well as geotechnical testing services.
All righty, again, another part of the deal of the project.
I'll make a motion to approve Taxiway B Construction Bidding and Construction Phase Services Task Order Number 2022-7.
Motion and a second to approve. Des, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Thank you. Item L, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-44, the 2024-2025 Municipal Budget Adoption 113th Fiscal Year. And Michael Ann is making her way to the podium. And Mr. Mestes, any comments before that?
No, I turned, yield my time to Chief Staff.
It is my pleasure this evening to present to you our final budget. We did receive approval of the interim budget in the letter from DFA dated June 14. Real quickly, if we take a look at that letter, I just want to assure you that we're meeting all of the criteria and the elements that they stipulated must be completed and submitted by July 31. So we do have to have our resolution adopting the operating budget. Once that is approved this evening, we will need for everybody to sign that. And I believe, Desri, did I give you one with the corrected eight?
You know, when I, next my folder in there, I have to.
So if we could get everybody to sign that this evening, I'll have a couple days to wrap this all up and get it turned into the state. We will also present to you this evening the June 30 fourth quarter financial report. There is also a resolution that goes with that. We do have salary schedules that will be submitted to DFA. And we will also ensure that our unaudited beginning cash balances do agree with the fourth quarter report ending cash. And then also, they go on to say that if you had any negative unaudited beginning cash balances, you would have to submit a budget adjustment. But we will also have a fairly lengthy bar that we'll go over for all of the end-of-the-year budget adjustments. Other than that, we have complied with state statute 6-6, 6-6-2K for the submission of the FY25 budget. There is also an administrative code 2.2.3 that we are also in compliance with. The only comments that we had in our budget approval letter was that we do need to make sure that we verify and adjust our debt schedule. They do have a new module where we upload our amortization schedules, and so they cross-check everything. I did find when we did submit the interim budget, I really did double-check all of those schedules against what we had in the budget, and I did have to fine-tune some of those numbers. So those were some of the changes that I made. But I'm pretty confident that all of that reconciles with those amortization schedules. And then also with the grocery receipts, they do say that we need to verify that our grocery receipts tax revenue is adequate to accommodate our budgeted expenditures. I think we do a good job of explaining that in the questionnaire that we submit to them. I generally detail for them what all of the anticipated construction projects are. You'll recall that we talked a little bit about that when I did the PowerPoint presentation before. We are looking forward to breaking ground on the Kearney Films School, hopefully the Maverick Gas Station, couple large airport projects, as was approved this evening, probably the water tank rehab project. We have the small bridge project, still ongoing Schuler Electrical Project, numerous HVAC and building repairs, the library boiler and elevator, and then we still have the railroad tunnel project. So just those few projects alone is almost $14 million. So I think that that, you know, you'll recall that we did budget a 5% increase in our GRT. We've been fairly conservative in those estimates the past few years. I do have in your budget binder, you'll see the graph that kind of shows the GRT history. So really, the last since 2003, we've been right about that 3.6 million, and that's just the general fund grocery receipts. So I think that we can demonstrate to DFA that, you know, we're not throwing some wild number out there. I think that we can meet or exceed those revenue projections. So we are hoping for a prosperous year. The other thing they mentioned, with the final budget, we have to submit the LEPF carryover approval letter. And with the LEPF, we did have a remaining balance from the prior year carryover, which is an unfortunate situation. This was pretty much caused by the new vehicles not arriving by June 30. So we will be reverting $17,282. It is an unfortunate situation, but it's also, you know, the last two years, the distributions in LEPF have gone up considerably. So we'll definitely, that presents some challenges in spending the money. So the carryover can only be carried over one year. So we have to keep that in mind. But I will be preparing the paperwork to submit to DFA for that, and then I'll have to remit a check to them for that amount. And then also, if there was any cash balance in our law enforcement recruitment grant, which there was not, we did spend the full $225,000. So I will submit a quarter, fourth quarter report to them detailing the police officers that we use towards that grant and showing that it was fully expended. So really, we've met all of the requirements that they've outlined in the budget approval letter. Some of the other highlights, as we discussed before, we did budget a 4% increase for the non-union employees, Public Works, and Fire, which were two contracts that you approved previously this year. In FY25, those will be receiving a 10% increase. And then under the current police contract, that was a 2%. Some other increases we saw or will see this year, 0.5% in the PERA contribution, and then the health insurance did go up 10%. So those are all things that we've taken into consideration with this budget. It was a little challenging just transitioning from the interim to the final budget and closing out the fiscal year. We've got a lot of projects and a lot of grants. And so a lot of the adjustments and things that you will see. things that you will see, I tried to put together a summary of the changes that I had to make to the final budget. A lot of it's just related to if we had grant reimbursements that we had to submit for, that money doesn't come in until July, so then we have to do temporary transfers out of the general fund to all these different funds, and then I have to turn around and re-budget the repayment of all those funds now in the new fiscal year. So I've tried to be very diligent and capture all of that in this budget. I did also give you, probably in the back of your budget binder, I know some of the line item numbers and stuff might not mean a lot to you, but I did, I think it's just in the pocket in the back. I had over 100 different line items that I made adjustments to. So a lot of the grant funds, once we close out the fiscal year and we can determine what our ending cash balances are, then we have to go in and adjust the expense side to show that those grants will be fully expended at the end of FY '25. So when we do the interim budget, it's really just based on a lot of estimates, and then once we hit the end of the fiscal year, we have more solid information to know what projects were completed as of June 30, and then which ones kind of crossed over into the new fiscal year. So I think, as far as temporary transfers go, we had, like, the juvenile justice, that one, we had an outstanding grant reimbursement, but we had legislative, let's see, Public Works, capital outlay equipment, juvenile justice, we had airport fuel safety grant, we had the vault grant, the CARES Act grant for the airport, senior center kitchen renovation, the Schuler plumbing project. So all of those are some of the ones that I had to transfer funds at the end of the fiscal year to cover till the reimbursements come in. And I've actually gotten quite a few reimbursements already, so I was kind of surprised DFA turned those around pretty quickly. So we did have a deadline of July 15th to submit all grant reimbursements, so we did meet all of these deadlines. When we look at the budget as well, and in talking even about the juvenile justice grant, that one, we do get a 15% administrative fee for being the fiscal agent. So with the increase in the funding, that's probably about $45,000, and so that helps me offset some of the personnel costs within our department, because we do process the payroll for the coordinator, all of the payments to the subcontractors go through our accounts payable, and then just my time managing the grant, the single audit, everything that goes along with federal funding. So we also do have the law enforcement recruitment fund grant again this year. It will only be 50%, but that will defer $112,500 in salary expense for the police department. So, and then in year three, that would drop to 25%. I don't know if we talked about this before, but in FY '27, the state legislature had passed legislation to do away with the fees that New Mexico Tax and Rev collects. I think it's like a 2.5%, 3% fee that they deduct off the top of our grocery receipts. So, you know, in FY '27, currently, we're paying about $95,000 just out of the general fund for those fees, so that's money that we can anticipate coming into the budget in FY '27. So we kind of want to keep that in mind as well. It's not very often that we have new sources of income, so we'll kind of be watching for that one. Also, the Fire Department is receiving a state EMS grant this year. They were awarded $205,000. That will be for another new ambulance, which probably will take two years to build and receive, but we would have $40,000 from the county, and then the city, believe it or not, this ambulance is going to be right about $500,000. So the city would need to contribute $255,000. So I've put that in the budget, but realistically, I don't think we will see it in FY '25, so that's something that I'll make a note for DFA, that it is in the budget, but we don't know that we would receive it probably until FY '26. The EMS annual distribution is also going up. It's typically probably about $16,000. They'll receive $64,000 this year, so that'll be a lot more money to, for the operations of the ambulance, the medical supplies, training, advanced training for their staff. So that'll be good, because that has kind of really been underfunded for quite a few years. So we're kind of anxious to see that. If we look at the summary of changes that I made, you'll see on the revenue side, I did go ahead and adjust the fines and forfeitures down again. As you saw this evening, we did have to introduce another ordinance to still further clean up another section of our ordinance that still had court fees in there. So hopefully, with the two ordinances that we will have adopted, we'll clean all of that up, because we will no longer be collecting those assessments. Under the miscellaneous revenue, we did get two residual payments this year, one from Raton Waterworks. That one's $21,768, and then the RPS residual was $249,818. So those were revenues that we typically don't put in the interim budget, because we never know what those amounts will be. So that's definitely some income that'll be coming into the final budget. I think because we had talked about utilizing a certain percent of our reserves for non-recurring expenditures, a lot of those funds will just kind of offset some of what we were looking to dip into reserves. I did go ahead and increase our abatement expense, another $100,000. We aren't sure, but I believe that some of those expenses may be reimbursed through the New Mexico Environment Department. We are going to try to work with them on a reimbursement program, but I would imagine we would have to front the cost and then get reimbursed, so something to keep in mind. Hopefully, we'll have more information on that. I did have to correct a few of the salary schedules. I did give all of the information to our HR director, so that all of the raises could go into effect July 1st, and then her and I kind of worked together, and I cleaned up my salary schedules. I had a couple on the police side that I didn't have classified properly for the sergeant, the captain, and first and second class. And then you'll also see on the transfers, that's where it gets kind of weird, because we're reimbursing ourselves in FY '25, all of the monies that we had basically used to cash flow, like the film project, we did do a transfer of $500,000. The reimbursement for the film equipment was submitted at the end of the fiscal year, so we didn't receive it until July. But we do have $1.1 million in capital outlay for the film project. We've spent probably about $425,000 of that, so we still have quite a bit to spend. And then we also have the EDA and the HUD grants that we're going to start moving forward with, and I'm not real sure how some of those are going to work, if we're going to have to put forth the money and then try to get reimbursed. So you might see several budget adjustments this year where we're having to do more temporary transfers. So in my explanation to DFA, I'll have to detail out to them what temporary transfers we made during this fiscal year that did not get reimbursed as of June 30, so then I had to put them into the new budget. So that's why you kind of see this influx of cash coming back in. And then the $500 transfer for the EDA grant, I had initially put that in there, but when I reviewed the EDA file, the grant that we got, $1.1 million legislative capital outlay, there was a resolution that the commission approved, and in the resolution, it said this would count towards our match for EDA, so we don't have to come up with another $500,000. However, we are still seeking additional funds for the film project, but that'll be through some other programs. DFA does have a couple grants out there right now for matching funds. They also have another grant, if you're applying for federal funds, if your project comes in over budget, they could help fill the gaps, so we're hoping to tap into some of those funds as we move along with this project. Other than that, I did detail out on the bottom just what we had discussed previously, taking out the $500,000 and making a couple adjustments. We would probably be using about $1.3 million in reserves. And I think most of those projects, with the exception of some of the HVAC units, are kind of, have started and are ongoing. So is there any questions kind of over all of that information?
You were saying on the amortization schedules, getting them to agree, is there rounding situation?
No, I had a couple where I didn't update the principal and interest amounts on my budget. So when I went back to the actual amortization schedule, I was just kind of cross-checking everything, and so I had to update those principal and interest amounts. I mean, sometimes it could be rounding. You'll also see on the debt schedules, there's usually a transfer out, so if we've pledged grocery receipts to the repayment of an NMFA loan, you'll see a transfer out. I'm trying to think, well, even like on the fire equipment, you're going to see a transfer out of your Fund 202. They actually do what's called an intercept, and so when Tax and Revenue gives us the money, they intercept the loan payment and send it to NMFA right away, but I have to show it as a transfer to the loan. But yeah, so just, like I said, there were a few, and I cleaned them up just to make sure that everything agreed with the amortization schedules.
Because when you, when you receive funds off a loan, DFA or whatever agencies involved, send you their amortization schedule?
I don't know. On the very back of your binder, I've made copies. It's usually through the New Mexico Finance Authority, with the exception, you have a couple USDA schedules in here. I did also update, there's a, it's called the debt schedule. It's, this is kind of a summary. It looks like this. This is kind of a, this is kind of the old spreadsheet we used to send to DFA. Now that they have it in a portal, all of this will be uploaded into their portal, but I still like to use that to cross-check my figures. And then behind that spreadsheet, you have all of your amortization schedules. So typically, we will pay interest in November, and then in May each year, we make an interest on a principal payment, is generally how those work.
Any other comments, questions?
Just a question, Renee. The residual payments from Raton Waterworks and RPS, are they always typically just going into the general fund? We never budget them for anything specific?
We never know if we're going to...
Right, get them, yep. But I'm just thinking, at the end of this year, you know, we know going into next year that we, what we just received, and it just kind of hangs out in there. I'm just thinking our street fund...
Little history, and Dave can back me up. Since I've been involved, this is the first time I remember getting a residual from RPS.
I did go back and look. During my tenure, there were two other times, not quite as large as the one we're receiving now, but water, pretty typically, we do get a distribution from them, but I mean, it usually ranges from $20,000 to $170,000, $80,000, it varies. No, I think the commission certainly, you mentioned streets, and I mean, I think we talked about this before, there may be a shortfall in our street improvement fund, so I think somewhere down the road, the general fund potentially may have to cover our match on several street projects.
Especially if the gas tax keeps dwindling.
Exactly what I'm thinking about. And I know, we don't know from year to year, and, you know, we don't know till the end of the year, but then once we know at the end of the year for the next year, it'd be possible to say. But I guess it's all coming out of the same bucket, so...
It is, and so I think, you know, we've talked, this budget is kind of a living document. We'll submit it by Wednesday, and we'll have our first budget adjustment probably, no, no, probably in September, because we won't get an approval letter from them until September 1st. But we generally have a budget adjustment ready to go, and a lot of times, it's just a lot of these grants that we've applied for, we don't know if we're going to get them, so our first budget adjustment is a lot of times just a ward of additional funds. Or as we, you know, all distribute this to all the department heads as well, and so as we start working with it, and my office staff will be using it, surely we'll come across line items and things that need adjustments.
The percentage to cover your administrative is, is it typically around 15%?
Are you talking about the juvenile justice?
Well, no, for any of the, like, USDA grants or any of that.
That's the only grant that we receive any sort of administrative support.
So there's not provisions in some of these others, I mean, or future?
Very, very rarely.
And we've complained to the congressional delegation many times about that, because these are very burdensome.
Yeah, you know, even at the county level, I can't speak to Colfax County, but like, when I go to the juvenile justice trainings, a lot of the fiscal agents are counties, and that's always been the complaint year after year, because they're managing a lot of grants, and there's really not a component to pay their staff for the extra work involved.
The grant I wrote for the school, I always factored in a pretty healthy amount for administrative costs, especially if they were taking on the total fiscal agent responsibility payroll and...
It's not really an administrative cost, but sometimes you could look at, like, engineering services in a sense allowable through most of these grants. So if we contract with Engineering Analytics, they're going to manage the grant, Molsen Corbin manages the grant, so I mean, they're getting a fee for their services, and sometimes that's the better route to go, is to hire a professional firm to manage these larger federal projects for sure, because you could, you know, pay for the administration through an engineering services.
In my work with the agent, there are some grants that we get administration fees for, and there's specific parts in the grant that we're getting a fee for that they won't always collect the fee for, so it's interesting. Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor and Commissioner, real quick, besides putting this together and talking to me at least three times a week, she's juggling 120 cats' hair. I'd like to thank Michael Ann for all the work that she's putting this together.
So real quickly, if we just take a look at the recap sheet, total general fund budget is $7,357,821, and then overall, with all funds for FY '25, our budget is $28,660,348. our budget is $28,660,348.
Can I go ahead? Any other comments, questions?
Just a question. Does this budget approval include, we're approving along with it, the water works and?
Yes, so we did put in your packet copies of those entities budgets as well. I know several of you sit on those boards, so you've seen them. But yeah, we would like to include them in the motion to approve.
Motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2024-24. Is there any further discussion? Dez, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Item in, deliberate act on Resolution 2024-45, approval of the fiscal year 2024, end of year financial reports for the City of Raton, Raton Water Works and Raton Public Service. Mike, go ahead.
Mayor Commission, in your packet, we do bring to you the fourth quarter report. You will see that as of June 30th, our ending cash, which ties to the beginning cash of our new fiscal year budget is $4,444,316, less the required 1/12th, which is $653,988.50. That leaves you available cash of just a little over $3.7 million. I've also detailed for you the ending cash balances and the remainder of our funds. I did not bring to you this evening the July GRT distribution since this is kind of a fiscal year-end report. So as we talked at the last meeting, we did in the fiscal year, 5.21% above our budget projection. We just talked about the outstanding grant reimbursements that we had at year end. And as a result, we did make those temporary transfers and they have been rebudgeted into the FY25 budget. So as I'm starting to receive those funds already, I'll get with the city manager and we'll start doing the manual checks to start slowly replenishing the general fund as those funds are received. The city of Raton this past fiscal year exceeded $6 million in capital expenditures. And that was various state and federal grants and also the NMFA financing for the Cimarron pump project and then also the financing for the two new fire trucks. These capital expenditures included over $2 million street improvements, a new ladder and pumper truck, ball field improvements, airport projects, Cimarron system pump upgrades and various facility improvements. We were also successful in expending the law enforcement recruitment grant funds and ended the fiscal year with only one vacancy in the police department. And so we hope to have that one filled hopefully here pretty soon. Been a long time since the department has been fully staffed. And so I think as we've talked in the past, part of the reason why we've been able to build up our cash reserves over the years, not just because we're being fiscally responsible, but a lot of it has been vacancies in police and fire and other departments within the city. And so as those positions have remained vacant, we've just kind of, you know, continued to build up a surplus really in the budget. So definitely not the way that you want to do it, but that's pretty much how it's happened over the years. The city of Raton, we will receive 50% of the grant funds for year two for the law enforcement recruitment fund. I don't know if I mentioned, we did apply for the grant for the fire department. It is a similar grant for recruitment of firefighters. That one, we have not received a notice of award yet. So once we do, I mean, that would probably be a budget adjustment that we would see. And that would actually free up some money in salaries that the commission could choose to reallocate the funds. And you'll recall, when we got the law enforcement recruitment grant, we bought the two cameras, the mobile cameras. And I think those have worked, worked well. So we'll just wait and see how much we get for the fire department recruitment. Also, the FY24 end of year reports, the final budget adjustments and the FY25 budget must be submitted to DFA by the July 31st deadline. I've included in your packet also our grocery receipts comparison report. We've got the cannabis report. Gas tax, once again, that one still is very concerning. We ended the year close to $43,000 less than what we had collected in the previous year. And then the year before that, we were down almost $40,000. So if we do, if we are successful in being awarded some of these larger street projects, we would definitely probably have to look to the general fund to cover the match. Lodger's tax was also down significantly. We had budgeted right about $500,000 in revenue and our revenues came in at about $466,000. So we fell short, close to $40,000 in the lodger's tax. So that's going to make it a little bit difficult this year because we did, when I detailed out all of the commitments that had been approved that hadn't been reimbursed, they actually exceeded what our ending cash balance was. So hypothetically, if we, you know, we know that Gate City doesn't happen till September, rent to Raton in July. So typically, we don't expend those funds until July and August. But we made the allocation probably in April and May. So when you add up all of the allocations, they exceeded what our, because our ending cash balance was $70,000 in the promotional fund. And I think our commitments were probably closer to $80,000. So, you know, we'll get through the summer, have kind of our signature events. And then as winter comes and things slow down a bit, the fund will replenish a bit. But the board's not really going to have that surplus of funds that they've become accustomed to ever since COVID. So when COVID hit, the funds kind of accrued and then we had this surplus that we needed to spend. And so we did spend a lot of the funds on additional billboards, things like that. We've had some new events. We also are doing this gravel guide. So that'll be coming out. And then just like I said, our normal events, balloon rally, rent to Raton, Gate City. But yeah, it does not leave a lot of additional funds. Probably new, new events or events typically coming seeking more money than they've gotten in the past. Other than that, do you have any questions regarding the financial report?
We just need to keep an eye on those gas tax, lot of these guys.
We did have a conversation at the last lodger's tax board and I think we've talked about it for a few months now, the need to amend the ordinance for the short-term rentals. The county does have that in their ordinance. They also do contract with a company that helps them collect and identify who is doing short-term rentals. So that's kind of the challenge there. But I think we could generate some additional revenues if we, if we do pursue that change to the ordinance. So we'll kind of set that as a goal for ourselves in the new fiscal year.
All righty, any other comments, questions?
We did provide you with copies of Raton Water Works and RPS financial reports as well.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-46.
One second.
I'm sorry. It's the wrong thing. 2024-45, amended that. Approval of the FY24 end of year financial reports for the city of Raton, Raton Water Works in Raton.
Motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2024-45. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Dez.
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
All righty, thank you. Item nine, deliberate act on Resolution 2024-46, fiscal 24 year, end of year budget adjustments. Michael Ann.
Mayor Commission, you'll see in your packet, we bring to you three pages of end of fiscal year adjustments. A lot of them are just, you know, moving monies from one line item to the other. Typically, you know, we look to make sure, for one, that no individual fund is overspent. But I do prefer to adjust them at the line item level. The way DFA actually has their new system set up, their chart of accounts is very similar to ours. So it's kind of important that we do it for each individual line item so that nothing in their system would show like over budget in whatever their line item category is. So not only do I do the adjustment within our in-code system, but then we do it within the DFA system. We have a crosswalk to what their chart of accounts is. In the transfers at the bottom, you'll see that's kind of where I identified the various transfers that we made throughout the fiscal year where we didn't reimburse the funds into the general fund. So some of that is, is what we, oh, did you not get one there? Okay, well, we, we had some extras.
Sorry, I was wondering.
We were wondering who didn't get one.
Thank you.
Did you have any other extras?
I think that's it. Do you have one?
I got one.
Do I have one?
But talking about the transfers, that's, you know, the film project, the senior center, and then the quality of life grant were some of the ones that we had done the temporary transfers on. And so as those projects are kind of ongoing in the new fiscal year, we've rebudgeted the repayment of those funds to the general fund. And then the others that are showing as transfers out, those were the ones that were made to cover any outstanding reimbursements from the various grants for each of those. Other than that, everything else, like I said, just pretty well cleaning up the transfers and some line item adjustments.
Any questions for Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-46. Just for your 24 end of year budget adjustment.
Motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2024-46. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Item O, deliberate act on Resolution 2024-47, Designating Official Custodian of Public Records. Mr. Messing? Mayor Commission, New Mexico State Statute 14, Article 1, Article 2, and Article 3 classifies as preservation, restoration, destruction, inspection, and exemptions from public inspections and duties of the city clerk as defined in Section 3-13-1. New Mexico State Statute 1978 include protection of public records and therefore, the city designates the city clerk to be the official custodian of public records for the city of Raton.
Good luck to you. Are there any questions, comments?
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-47, Designating the Official Custodian of Public Records to be the city clerk.
Motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2024-47. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item P, Close Executive Session pursuant to Section 10-15-1. H2 personnel, city manager option, year one, contract renewal. Do you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into Close Executive Session pursuant to Section 10-15-1. H2 personnel, city manager option, year one, contract renewal.
A motion in a second to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Dez.
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
We are in closed session, thank you.